Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Chris Murray and welcome to a town hall meeting. I'm the current chairman of the Macon County Republican Party, but I'm here tonight as a citizen, a resident of Macon County, and as an American. Like you, I'm here to participate in this town hall meeting. I invited Van Outley, Chairman of the Macon County Democratic Party, to join me here at the podium tonight, but he respectfully declined, and as it was, he had plans and it isn't during the time. Can we stand for the colors, please? I'll present the presentation of the colors.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It is now my pleasure to introduce Pastor Ed Charles to the oath of the invocation. Please extend.
Father, I'm glad that I can be here tonight to voice this prayer on behalf of all the folks gathered in this room. When we read in the Bible of all that you have given so that we can have freedom, not just the freedoms of America, but the freedom of human beings, the freedoms that every person is born within you, then we realize that the freedom that we have comes from you and that we're free in you. And, Lord, the government, that kind of slavery and persecution is so serious, but when I recognize that the persecution that comes from a person being a slave to sin is so much worse, and yet you've provided that freedom in Christ. Lord, we come here looking for wisdom and looking for understanding and talking about authority and positions and things like that. And I'm always, always so aware of the fact that you, if we want to understand it, we come to you, you have all understanding. If we're wanting to look for authority, we come to you because you have all authority. If we're looking for wisdom, you have all wisdom. And you said for those who walk in faith that you freely have provided those things for us if we'll simply trust you. So, Father, I pray tonight that folks gathered in this room that their hearts are trusting you. And we understand that we're going to talk about horizontal relationships, man to man, that the real relationship that makes man's relationship with man right is when our relationship with you is right, and when our relationship with you is not right, then we'll never get it right, man to man. So, Lord, I'm looking to you, and I pray for these folks, and I know that their hearts are going to be turned toward you and turned toward home. And I pray all this in the name of Jesus and for our space.
I'd like to recognize a few officials and dignitaries here tonight. Nelsie Bates, former chairman of the Macon County Commission. Carol Corbin, former chairman of the Macon County Commission. Our own dignitary Helen Carpenter. Jeff Hunt, district attorney for the 29th V Prosecutor Hill District. And Chief Deputy Ken Lane, here representing Sheriff Hall. Thank you. And thank the volunteers for their cookies and apple cider. The town hall meeting has been a tradition in our country from at least the 1600s, starting in New England. It was long years to discuss and vote on local issues in open forum. It has evolved, however, in most parts of our country into an event that provides an opportunity for citizens, regardless of their political affiliation, to engage with their elected representatives and question them on issues that affect their lives, their community, state, and nation. We are gathered here today to celebrate that great tradition by engaging in civil discussion with one of our elected representatives. This interaction between citizens and elected representatives is one of the greatest examples of American exceptionalism. Town hall meetings are nonpartisan events, and tonight's town meeting is no exception. As Americans, we are defined not by our differences, but by our shared history. Let us share tonight's history in this town hall meeting, not as Democrats or Republicans or Libertarians, but as Americans. So, tonight, engage, question, discuss, but please do so with dignity, civility, respect. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, it is my honor and privilege to present my friend and our neighbor from the great state of North Carolina, State Senator Jim Davis.
Thanks for being here, everybody. We know it's a busy week, you know, with Thanksgiving and the holidays coming up and it's impacting your schedule. I'm very grateful for your being here. We're having a difficult time scheduling town hall meetings in all eight of our counties, so we're doing our best to accommodate those people and give them an opportunity to ask big questions, or however you wish. I'd like to also introduce my wife, Judy. That's my wife, not my daughter. And my sister Kay, who's Kay is my legislative assistant, maybe you already know that. I have two sisters, they're both younger, and she decided that she was going to come and, you know, watch my back and all. I'm very proud of my sisters, they both have master's degrees, they are both teachers, and one of them has a concealed carry permit and is an expert marksman. I'm going to leave that a mystery so you can all know which one it is. So, Kay, actually, it would be a lot easier for us to, my position would be better served than her position if we were to switch sides. Kay does have a great job for me, and I'm very appreciative of that. I'm here mainly tonight to listen to the concerns and questions that you have. Hopefully, some of the things that have been on the news, some of the things that you've heard about the legislature and you're unclear about, you have an opportunity to speak. And so, that's what I'm here for. It's been a busy 10 months, it's a steep learning curve, somebody said, and aptly so, it's like drinking water from a fire hose. But we've, I think, we have a lot to be proud of. For the first time in a long time, North Carolina's budget is under control. It was in a mess, and it didn't happen overnight, and it's not going to get fixed overnight. But we have a balanced budget this year, and we're proud that we were ready to accommodate that. And it wasn't easy, if it had been easy, it would have been completed already. But we were able to do that and allow the temporary taxes that were put in place by the previous legislature a couple of years to expire. That's what we ran on, that's what we promised we would do, and we did. And I'm very proud of that record as well. So, without any further ado, oh, and thank you, Chris Murray, for putting this on, I'm sorry, and Jim Country, you're both going to be providing cookies and cider. Thank you for being here. And Ken, I always feel more secure when Ken's around. He never could have whipped me in a fight because when I'm younger, he couldn't have fought. But thank you, me and your kid. So, without any further ado, oh, I'm sorry, one more thing. This evening, I got a call from my friend Jeff Hunt. Jeff Hunt is the district attorney over in, I guess, Polk County, Transylvania, or Hartman or something, Hall, Hall Anderson. I got to know Jeff during the campaign last year, and I've worked with him some of the last 10 months on some law enforcement issues. And so, Jeff has volunteered to give a short testimony. So, Jeff, before, here's my friend.
Jim, I want to thank you for that, and I came over from Brevard as district attorney of that prosecutorial district. I've been the DA down there, elected DA, for 17 years. The North Carolina DA is interfaced with the legislature every week that the legislature's in session, because that's where we get the resources for our 40 respective districts. But that's also, when you do that, you get in close contact with which legislators are going to help prosecutors and law enforcement and which ones aren't. And I came over from Brevard tonight to personally thank you for what you've done for law enforcement and prosecutors over the year, the term, this is your second term.
No, it's my first.
All right, well, over the years that I've run into you, you've really been there when we needed you, and there are several, as you know, issues that came up this time where you were right there for us, and I want to personally thank you. Issues like death penalty, issues like toughening up drunk and driving, the penalty for that. There's even a racial percentage bill for death penalty cases, which you stood up against, and I thank you personally for that and also with the DA. So, that's my deal, Jim's a friend, but he's also a heck of a legislator. And in the past, we've had legislators down there who've come back to their districts and talked a good game, but then when they're, when I run into them down there, they don't want to talk to prosecutors. So, thank you for being there.
It was my honor. And thank you for being here, it's very kind of you. And, you know, the Racial Justice Act is what he's talking about, and if you have any questions about that, I'd be glad to answer them. So, who's got the first question? And everything's on the table. If you can't handle the questions here, you shouldn't be in the job, so.
I'll start. Okay. So, I understand in January that the gas tax is going to go up another three cents?
It's scheduled to go up.
That it's scheduled to go up? That would make us the second highest taxed state in the Union on gas taxes? And I was just wondering, is that going to fly, or?
Well, there's a lot, we don't know yet. There's a lot of resistance in the legislature. You know, we had an opportunity actually to stop the last gas tax that was implemented in the previous legislature. We didn't stop that, and that money is going to be earmarked for highways and bridges in the state. But especially in this economic time, I'm going to have a difficult time voting for that and allowing that to go up again. So, all I can tell you is what my intentions are, I don't, I can't speak for the rest of the legislature, but I can tell you that there's a lot of concern there about allowing another increase to go up there. So, gotten that question before.
It's going to be bad enough if people go up.
Indeed, it is. So, even though that tax is one of the, you know, goes for infrastructure, for roads and bridges, and we need, we need to maintain that infrastructure in North Carolina, but this is not the time to do it, in my opinion.
How secure is that trust fund? Have you ever rated like all the rest of them?
It has been in the past, that's, that's not been our, our habit since we've been there. So, we anticipate to, we're going to hold it secure for what it was entitled, you know, what it was set up for, for a trust fund. But that and a lot of other funds have been raided, and it's taken us a while, but we're finding out a lot of stuff that's, that we're uncomfortable with. A lot of these funds have been raided. You know, and they were raided to, to avoid making the tough decisions. Nobody likes to make the tough decisions and cut, cut the money, and so they were hoping that by raiding this one a little bit and that one a little bit, that, you know, the economy would turn around and the funds would keep coming in, but that hasn't happened. And so, we've had to make some tough decisions, but we need to preserve those trust funds for what they were set up to do. So, Rob, thanks for the pledges, by the way. Appreciate it.
This is a non-tax question. With nine guys running through churros, nine of them, um...
I think there's 11 now, isn't there, Jeff? Jeff's one of them.
I think there's at least 10.
Well, my question over in Nashville, there are two.
They're in the 10.
Where's the 12? They're on the 10.
Yeah, that's been changed, remember? I'm sorry, Rob.
Anyway, there, somewhere I heard, I don't know where, that there's not going to be any runoff this year, any runoff on an election, in case that there, that we needed for, nobody gets 40 percent, you know? You know, with 10 people running, how can anybody get 40 percent? You'd have one, you'd be one of, you'd have to be a saint before you would. You don't need nothing, man. No, all I was wondering is, is there going to be runoff?
My understanding is that there will be. The law is in place to have a runoff. We don't know when it's going to happen. We don't know when the primary is going to happen, for sure. We've gotten free clearance from the Justice Department on our redistricting, which was a monumental deal, we thought, but, but there have been at least two suits that have been filed challenging those. So, we don't know, we'll just have to wait for the judges and, you know, for the process to take its course. And so, the primary is scheduled for, what about the first Tuesday in May? Right now, and then the short session begins the following week, but that's, you know, we'll just have to wait and see how this schedule goes. So, we can't help you much on that.
Where does voter ID stand?
Voter ID, you know, was passed by both the House and Senate. We have the votes in the Senate to override veto, but we didn't bring it up for an override because we knew the House couldn't. And we need about four votes in the House to override that veto, and we had bigger fish to fry. We may need a Republican governor to override that voter ID. About 70 percent, a majority of Democrats in North Carolina, support photo voter ID. I think it's like 72 percent, something, the last polls that I saw of North Carolinians that, that support photo ID. You know, the, there was a black Democrat, I forgot his name, this summer, that was the, that he filed a bill and they passed it, a black Democrat for voter, photo ID, and passed it up out of legislature. So, some people will tell you, they try to tell you that it's a racial issue or an old, you know, it discriminates against the old people. Well, that's kind of impossible, because most old people that I know get a Medicare check, and if you get a Medicare check, they don't send you a check anymore, it's electronic fund transfer. To get electronic fund transfer, you've got to have a checking account, have a checking account because of the Patriot Act, you've got to have a photo ID. You need photo ID to get into the governor's mansion, you need a photo ID to rent a move, you need a photo ID when you come through customs, you know, when you get stopped by law enforcement, you need a photo ID. So, we didn't, you know, I just don't believe that it's an impediment to voting.
Why wouldn't she run for state, either?
No, she did vote, she did veto.
Of course she did.
Yeah, it was vetoed, but we haven't, we didn't take it up to override. I'm sorry, I didn't make that clear. Yeah, that was one of the, we overrode five vetos, two of them unanimously in the Senate.
Justin. Do you know how much it would cost to implement the voter ID?
Far less than 25 million has been ventured about, because we don't think that the numbers that we hear are accurate. You know any college student, anybody going to community college that doesn't have a photo ID?
Has a state-issued voter ID?
A photo ID, you know, and the state would recognize that.
Okay.
So, that's, you know, most people have a photo ID.
Is there some issue over state issue versus just repeat?
Well, and there's some confusion, Justin brings up a good point, and there's some confusion about that, and so when they, you know, when this is implemented, there, it's going to have to be determined exactly what they're going to accept. And so, but they, you know, if it's a legitimate photo ID, you like a driver's license, we can issue, we can issue a photo ID if you're not driving. There's very few people that don't have a photo ID because they need it.
You missed one.
What's that?
Those old timers can't go into Target and buy wine without a photo ID.
We don't want you drinking, Roger.
The wine is cheaper at Walmart.
Walmart doesn't ask for a voter, but Target does, and you can't buy it without showing.
Well, I didn't know that, but...
It's because Target's the French company.
That's right. Did you have a question? Oh, sorry.
When people write in the paper about this photo ID stuff?
Yes.
They talk about how costly it's going to be, how much trouble it's going to be for old folks to get a photo ID, but they never bother to mention the one person that Acorn brought to the poll and voted 22 times. They don't mention that, they don't mention the busload that Acorn brought to the poll to vote that wasn't even registered. I think we need to talk about that, you guys need to talk about that.
Well, I just, hopefully, we will get the law passed, and so we won't have to talk about it, we'll just implement. But there was a case in the eastern part of the state where a lady, I say, I don't know if she was a lady, she's a woman that was running for office, that voted with an absentee ballot or early vote. She voted early voting and then showed up the day of, of balloting, and she was seeking an office to try to vote again, and she was turned away.
She said she forgot she...
And so, there are, there are many stories.
The system actually worked there.
Was that?
The system actually worked there without a photo ID.
That's true, but we have a senator in, in the Senate that went to vote, and his dad had cast his, you know, they had, his dad had gone there, and his dad got his ballot, and that was in his hometown. And so, actually, you know, things happen. And I think that everybody that's entitled to vote should vote, and everybody that's entitled to vote, their vote should count, and they should count one time. And so, everything that we can do to shore up the integrity of our voting process, of that right, I think is a good thing. I don't have a problem. And if it means no more to you to vote than, you know, you don't want to bother with getting a photo ID, then I'm sorry. But I want to know, everybody that's voting is entitled to vote, and their vote counts, regardless of how they cast it.
So, Justin, do you not have any problem with votes recast recently in 2008?
How many people speed in Burnington?
Well, I was just saying, because there was 40 cases that were called.
Yeah, but I mean, how many people speed in Burnington if nobody's watching? We don't know, we don't know. You can, you can show up, you can show up in North Carolina and vote, and all you have to do is tell them, you know, your name, and you can use the name of somebody that lives at a certain address, and if you know that they're out of town, then there's no way to catch you. And so, the, to prosecute a case for voter fraud is very difficult. My understanding is that you have to be from that precinct in order to turn somebody in for voter fraud. For example, if you were accompanying your relative in a precinct, a different precinct, you couldn't, if you saw some voter fraud, you couldn't turn them in. We just need to tighten up the rules so that everybody that, that votes in, there was, I just read an article about a, a black or African-American guy, I think he's from Mississippi, that is a strong proponent of voter, photo ID as well, because he, he says that he sees in his communities an abuse of that. And I can't call that place to mind right now, I just read that today. So, I mean, what's, what's the problem with, with ensuring our voting process, to make sure it's, I just don't think that there's a problem, and there's a solution looking for a problem. I just don't think there's organized voter fraud out there.
Have you talked to that?
I mean, honestly... Well, and I disagree, but I respect your opinion.
Yeah. Can I take a page out of my life? You spoke to that? Well, man, this has been cool five years ago. We had a young fellow living with us, and he registered to vote, and he moved back for, and I got precinct list, and I was going down precinct list, and I ran into this fellow's name. I took my pen, and I was getting ready to draw a line through it, and scratched him off. And I got over here to the end of it, and he had voted about four times, and he was in Florida. And so, I called him up, he was like a son, and I said, "Have you voted up your absentee or something?" He says, "No." So, I took the, the precinct list, took the board elections at the time, and I explained the problem to him. She went over and placed the things into the keyboard, and she said, "He voted."
So, he voted by absentee or something?
No, no, he didn't vote absentee, it was a vote by his name.
Or his name vote.
His name, that's somebody voted his name, but because I called him, I said, "You voted absentee up here." He says, "No." So, somebody voted, I don't know who voted.
Well, and, and Justin is right, there are not a lot of cases that are prosecuted, but we just need to tighten it up. I don't care who you voted for, what your party is, I think my vote should count just as much as yours, your vote should count just as much as mine, regardless of who you vote for. And so, that's, that's just the way I am, and that's the way I voted, that's the way I tend to vote, if we vote, yes, ma'am?
I don't know what percentage of the registered voting population actually voted for last election.
Well, that's not very good.
Well, I'm just saying, you know, here we're squabbling over a few people who voted fraudulently, and I really think that we ought to be doing something to involve the public in the political process and get more people out to vote. I mean, here we're squabbling about a few people because this, the majority of people in this county don't vote out and vote, and I think that's a much more important issue that's squabbling over a few people who might have done something fraudulently.
Well, a lot of people may not vote, and that's, that's why I have a town hall meeting, so I want more people to get involved.
Look how many people are here.
And I can't help that, we advertise it.
Look at all these empty chairs.
Yeah, well, we take freedom too lightly in America, don't we?
That's unfortunate.
I, I couldn't agree with you more. I, I couldn't, maybe a lot of them don't vote because they don't think their vote counts. I don't know, there's a lot of reasons, like some people don't care, say they don't make a difference anyway, they're all crooks, you know, I hear all kinds of things. Right? And so, I can't fix that, all I can tell you is that I intend to have town hall meetings in every county and constituent. I never say never, but I doubt that we've had five contacts in the last 10 months that we didn't respond. We have many people that would call back, and they said, "I can do, who is this?" And I'll say, "Jim Davis, who?" And I say, "Well, I'm your senator." "Oh, what, you called me back?" And we pride ourselves on constituent service, we listen to what the folks say, and if they have a concern, and something we need to take care of, we take care of it, and Kay is excellent at that. She, she calls up people that don't even live in my district and fixes the problem. So, I mean, that's how dedicated she is to constituent service. We care about what people think and their concerns and the problems that they have with, with the government, without. And hopefully, that makes a difference for those people. But I don't know, I can't fix that problem, all I can tell you is that we're going to work hard to, to serve the citizens. You know, some of them, they're going to be motivated to vote against me, and some of them are going to be motivated to vote for me. But that's America, I love it. I love the freedom. I just, a month ago, I was in China, and I went over there at my own expense to look at for cultural and economic opportunities for North Carolina. I was a part of a team of 10, and I was standing there in Tiananmen Square, and Tiananmen Square is a beautiful place, and we asked the person where the tank, the guy was, and they won't talk about that. And then there was two huge, they looked like they were six feet tall, electronic borders, like a, you know, giant TV screen only of like 100 feet wide. There was a monument in the middle, and I asked, there was a bunch of Chinese characters, and I asked our guy, I said, "What does that say?" And she read it, and she said, "Just some foolish stuff." They can't, they can't talk about that kind of stuff. And we can in America, and I have never, I'm a, I'm the son of a veteran that's still living, World War II, Korea, and Vietnam, and just, it's in our genes, isn't it? We care about our country, and we vote, and we try and make a difference. We care about our country and we vote and we try and make a difference. And I, there's a lot of apathy out there and some of it's welcome. But, uh, I don't know. I can't fix it. Yes?
I would like to just be strong. Um, we do the best we can to get people out to vote. It's like taking a point to try and getting them ordering more drinks. And this is what's happening all. I don't know whether they just feel that they don't wanna vote or what. But I have wishy-washy, very long, as Paul, and Paul, to get people to vote. And some are, "Nah, doesn't make any difference." And we also set up where you can, in, in different areas of, of county, to register to vote. And we try our best to get people out. And I want to say one thing too. I look around this whole room and I don't see anything.
How do you tell if that's African-American?
I asked, "Did you ask many questions?" And they didn't wanna have any. I know. Why is it that when you pass something like this, only one move comes and the others stay silent?
Well, some people didn't come because they thought that this was a, uh, more Republican event, even though it was held by that. It's nonpartisan. I served every citizen in the fiftieth district. Uh, some of them think I served them better than others, and that's okay. But, uh, I ran on a platform and we've, uh, we, we respected that platform. I'm very proud of what we've done. But, uh, you know, that's okay. That's America. We read stuff in the paper and people are upset with what we do, but that's America. You know, I celebrate the fact that we can do that. In a lot of countries, just like in Tiananmen Square, they can't do that. And so what a, what a great freedom that we have and I cherish it. So, uh, anyway. Any other questions? Yes?
Back to the early elections, early voting.
Yes.
Are those results published before an election day?
They are not, no.
Or is it just somebody's opinion that seemed to generate out? 'Cause I've heard things before and it turned out to be a little truth.
No, uh, I doubt, I can't speak for other counties, but I can tell you that Macon County, in my opinion, uh, is a, is an excellent board of elections. And, uh, they, uh, they follow the law. And that, it's against the law to publish that. And so when the polls close, as soon as the polls close, that's the first thing that they usually publish. You know, it's an early vote. Actually, early voting is a pretty good indicator of how the election's going, at least in Macon County. But no, they, they don't do that. And I, and I can, I can assure you that I have a clue who the, uh, the local board of elections is three people. And, uh, there are two Democrats and one Republican. Uh, in, in Macon County, if we have a Republican governor, then it's two Republicans and one Democrat. That's just the way it is. It's the way, but I have, I have the utmost confidence in the integrity of how the election is, is taken care of here in Macon County. And I doubt that, with a few exceptions, I doubt that there's much fraud here because a lot of them, they know everybody. But that's not always the case. So, somebody else over here had a question? Yes, Mr.?
I'm real pleased that no teachers in Macon County lost their job.
Mm-hmm.
And also that the class size will be lowered to a maximum of fifteen in the early grades. I think that's super and I applaud you for that. Um, education, the price of education has increased thirty percent over the past ten years, but student results have not improved. Scores are flat on it. Is it possible on the budget for education that certain money is allocated just for student and student needs, student services, and it doesn't go into the pockets of the educational bureaucrats?
Well, you know, there's a huge bureaucracy in the Department of Public Instruction in, in Raleigh. They, they call it the Pink Palace. It's right off of the, uh, uh, right, right across the bridge from the legislative building itself. And I think the payroll for the Department of Public Instruction is about seventy-two million dollars a year. You know, and one of the things that we were intent on doing is cutting down the bureaucracy. Not just in the Department of Public Instruction, but in all of the government. You know, the Highway Patrol, there's been some articles in the paper about cutting the Highway Patrol budget. I have, I have the utmost respect for the Highway Patrol. I developed a friendship with David McColl, who is the captain for the western part of the state. I'm very attentive to his needs. If we had line items in the budget for the Highway Patrol where they were gonna cut, um, was it eighty-two? Okay, eighty-two people in the bureaucracy of the Highway Patrol? And they chose to, uh, cut out the Highway Patrol academy, at least for this next year, instead of cutting off those bureaucrats. That was a decision that they made. Over our objection, we've had, we had a hard time getting the true numbers from the Highway Patrol, too. And I'll tell you, that's not a reflection on David McColl, you know, in the western part of the state. That's a reflection on the people in Raleigh. They just said, "We don't have to answer to you. We don't have to do what you said." And who do they answer to? Uh, what's, they, they, they're supposed to answer to the legislature. They say they answer to the governor. But they get their money from the legislature and so we adjusted their attitude a little bit.
I think you have a lot of law here.
Okay, let me tell you a little bit more about education. We try to cut out the bureaucracy. People need to know that the education budget, the, that the Republicans passed this year, actually increased the teachers. That's how much for teachers, about two thousand one hundred and nineteen. Okay? There's a net reduction in teachers of fewer than a thousand out of about eighty thousand. There are about eighty thousand teachers in, uh, in North Carolina, you know, give or take a few. About five thousand of them were funded by counties and about eleven thousand were funded by the feds. Uh, the feds' funding for teachers has gone down about twenty-four hundred. The state funding for teachers went down, uh, by six hundred full-time equivalents. And the Republican budget went up twenty-one hundred and nineteen. So you're gonna read stuff, and you have read stuff, about how we fired all these teachers during my campaign. They were saying we were gonna, you know, get rid of fourteen thousand or sixteen thousand teachers. That's not true. And the, the education budget was cut about five point eight percent below the governor's recommendation. But they weren't drakoning. You can, you can look at the facts. You can go to, uh, the Employment Security Commission. You can go to, uh, our physical staff got these numbers from the DPI as well. The two thousand seven to two thousand ten budget, uh, in the previous legislature, cut teachers by four thousand one hundred and nineteen, four thousand two hundred and nineteen, let's start with. Okay, you don't hear about that as drakoning. I mean, it actually went down like eleven percent. And ours, you know, went down one percent, just one year.
Well, would you say again what the comparison was between the legislature's, um, cut and as compared to the governor's?
The governor said that K through twelve, I'm talking about K through twelve education, which is thirty-seven percent of the state budget. Uh, we cut it five point eight percent. The governor, uh, recommendation was five point three percent or five point two. And so you're looking at an apple percent below, you know, a, a more of a cut than the governor recommended in order to get our budget in control. Now, I'm not casting blame on the previous legislature that they cut teachers. We're looking at a, a tough economy. We're in tough physical times and they were responding to the reality of the revenue that is coming in. You have to understand, we came in with a two point five billion dollar budget cut, so two point five billion. And the, the previous budget raised, had a temporary tax on sales tax. They went from six and three quarters to seven and three quarters. And they had income tax surcharges, you know, and they were hoping that that was gonna take, get them through that two years and that the economy was gonna corrupt, recover, and then they weren't gonna have a way to pull up. But that wasn't true. We promised, we felt that that money was far better left in the hands of the people that earned, and about one point three billion dollars. And so we allowed those temporary taxes to expire. Some people say, "Well, why don't you just extend them?" Seven percent of the people I heard, uh, said that they'd just keep the sales tax in. Well, I'm sorry, that election was held last November. We ran on the promise that we would allow those temporary sales taxes and those temporary income tax surcharges to expire. And we kept our promise and we allowed that to happen. Leadership told us about the first day that we were in a caucus, that if anybody wants to bring, you know, offer a bill that's gonna raise taxes, forget it. It's going nowhere. It'll go to ruins and that's what it was saying. And so we were not gonna raise taxes. That's what we ran on. We promised we were gonna do that. We were gonna get North Carolina's fiscal house in order. And we went a long ways towards doing that. And I'm very proud of being a part of that. But again, if it was easy, it would've been done already. And we had to do it without one point three billion dollars each year of the past by any of federal stimulus money. And a lot of that was used to pay for teachers and law enforcement. You know, and the critical functions of state government are education, law enforcement, public, and public safety. We have to, those are priorities that we have. And it's true, the teachers will tell you that they haven't had a raise in four years. Well, I, I've talked to a lot of people. I've had grown men, big guys, like Ken Lane size, with tears in their eyes, that didn't have a job and wanted us to do something to help them get a job, to help them get work. And we think that leaving the money in the hand of the people that earn it so they can buy, you know, buy stuff and they can spend it the way, the way they want to, uh, that is a far better way than, than giving it to the government and letting the government decide. You know, there are legitimate functions of government and they have to be fun. And I think I have a record in doing that here in this county. And I carry that same passion to Raleigh. But Raleigh's doing a lot of things that they shouldn't be doing. And there's a lot of, you know, if you're, I'll give you one example. Um, in the Medicaid, we spent forty-three million dollars a year more for a name-brand breast cancer drug in Medicaid than the generic. Forty-three million dollars a year. And the reason why we do that is because some legislator is in bed with the drug company. And he makes sure that the name brand is part of the medical world. It's another interesting, Medicaid is a huge problem in North Carolina. We spend, uh, about thirty-nine percent more than Oklahoma and Alabama for adult Medicaid with no different outcome. We spend thirty-nine percent more. And so there, I'm telling you folks, there's a lot of stuff that we need to do. We have to take care of the, of the healthiness in our society. But a lot of people are getting, are just milking the system. And we need to do everything that we can. And I'm not talking about just poor people milking the system. I'm talking about fat cats, too. We recently, uh, heard a story about a, uh, a business person that was, uh, had overcharged Medicaid seven million dollars. And, uh, that information was given to the hierarchy in the Health and Human Services. And they allowed this guy to settle for a hundred fifty thousand dollars. And I don't care what color you are, I don't care what party you are, that's wrong. And anytime we're doing this and we're not serving the citizens of North Carolina, we need to take care of that. So I'm all for getting rid of abuse. I don't care who's getting the money. It's some rich fat cat or some person that's being irresponsible in their behavior. We need to keep, keep being vigilant and keep these people from, uh, milking the system. And so I'm all for that. We have a lot of Medicaid fraud, you know, by people that are on Medicaid rolls and people that are serving. The people on Medicaid rolls, they can't pay off legislative charges. The people that have businesses, milking Medicaid can't. So we, there's a lot of things. But this, this education budget, I've, you know, there's, you've read a lot of stuff in the paper, but, uh, it's interesting that none of them say that the Republican budget increased the teacher roll, state funding of teachers by two thousand one hundred and nineteen, twenty-one hundred and nineteen. We put eleven hundred more teachers in K through three. Research has shown that if a kid can't read at grade level by the time they get to grade four, they have a much higher chance of failing in the higher grades. We've spent a lot of money, like you said, and without appreciable increase in outcome. Forty percent of our kids are not graduating on time. And about sixty-seven percent of them that go to college require repeat work. That's unacceptable. So we need to change the system. And I think we've gone a long ways towards doing that. And we're not done. We have a lot of work. I can tell you a lot of stories that would be depressing. You know, Kay and I were just discussing this evening, that it's a lot of work to do. You know, but we've made, uh, we've made a lot of friends and that, we serve with a lot of people, both, on both sides of the aisle, that have just as much passion to, uh, to get rid of corruption and to serve the citizens as, uh, as the rest of us.
So why don't you...
Pardon me?
So why don't you don't show up, uh, or don't show their bad side, uh, that's getting by?
Yeah, well, there's a, uh, there's a Republican, uh, a House member that's in trouble right now. And, uh, I don't know, the school's still out on that particular issue, but it's kinda smells like a rat. And if it is, they need to get rid of it. Again, I don't care who you are, don't care what color you are, what sex you are. But I will tell you that I served with some credible people in the legislature. Incredible, yes.
What percentage of the Medicaid budget do you feel is being misused?
Uh, there are, um, I really can't tell you that. I probably haven't gotten dug deep enough into it. But I'll, you know, I just told you that there was a study that was released in September of twenty-ten, uh, that indicated that we were spending about, uh, um, thirty, thirty-nine percent.
I don't know how much Alabama's spending, so that means nothing.
Well, I don't know. Plus, we have a lot of optional services. A lot of other states are, uh, requiring some sort of a co-pay, maybe a small co-pay for services. What that does is it helps give some people ownership of that service. I think that's a good idea. I think, uh, it, it, uh, I've seen that in my own practice. When people don't pay for anything, they don't value it as much. And I think it certainly ought to be affordable. But I think they ought, uh, they ought to pay something. I think we ought to give people an opportunity to earn a benefit, too. I've heard, I feel strongly about that. You know, anytime you give somebody something for nothing, somebody else has to pay for it. So, yes?
I've got a question. I'm going back to the budget. Does the governor of the state of North Carolina have the line item vetoed? Or does the governor just approve or disapprove of a budget?
She does not have line item veto.
Wouldn't that make a governor a little bit stronger and make perhaps the passing of budgets and so forth a little bit, uh, easier if he or she, whomever the governor is, could, uh, you know, cut certain things but leave other things in? Would that be better?
I think there's some value in the line item veto. You know, I wouldn't have a, I wouldn't have a problem with it. Just like everything else, it can be abused. But I would be in favor of it. It will certainly be more difficult for the governor to, you know, to go on record, to be held accountable for, "This is what you wanna veto."
Well, that, that's what I would think, that it would put more pressure on the governor, but in turn it would give more power to the governor, uh, and perhaps you would be able to, uh, do better on the budgets and so forth. I, I don't know. I was just...
Yeah, I'm comfortable. But in North Carolina, she does not have one. The governor doesn't. Right now, she... Yes?
What is the financial condition of the state of North Carolina?
Well, uh, actually, you hear a lot about California. North Carolina's problem, it was, as a percentage of, uh, GDP and the budget was worse in California, North Carolina. Let me tell you what we have. We have a two and a half billion dollar deficit. We have about seven billion dollars in debt. I'm not talking about highway money. Talk about government buildings. We have, our state employee's pension system is, uh, about ninety-five percent. Let me tell you something. Who runs the pension system in North Carolina is the treasurer's office. They do an incredible job. And incredible. I don't know who the treasurer is, I should know whether they're Democrat or both. And you know Justin, I don't know who they're part of. It doesn't make any difference. They do, that office is incredible. That's one reason why we put more responsibility on there, because they do such a good job. Uh, but the, it's largely a part of the economy and the pension system has been underfunded the last few years. Been robbing money from instead of putting it there. We fully funded the pension system, uh, this year, but it's not up to snuff. It was about ninety-five percent funded. Uh, the judicial, uh, judicial system, uh, retirement plan is about ninety-one percent funded. It's underfunded by about forty million dollars. The, the, uh, state retirement system is underfunded two point eight billion. Uh, the, uh, National Guard pension system is about forty million dollars underfunded. The real kicker is the... The real kicker is the retiree healthcare plan. It's thirty-two point eight billion dollars underfunded. That's an unfunded liability in North Carolina. Thirty-two, that was the retiree healthcare for North Carolina citizens. Until about three years ago, you could work for the state of North Carolina for five years, go to the private sector, and when you turned sixty-five, you had healthcare for life, for your health care for life. That was changed, fortunately, that was changed, because that's, you know, we've made a lot of promises that's gonna be tough to keep. Fortunately, they changed some of the rules, and we're in the process of changing some more of those. And health insurance, that health benefit is gonna have to be changed. One of the things that we changed this year that I'm not comfortable with, but it got through, was that we're not paying, having people that are over a certain B and M body mass index and, and that have a tobacco habit, they're not getting charged a premium, we're not paying this shit. But anyway, I lost that back. Yeah, but we have, you know, people, it's a free, it's a legal product. And if you choose to do it, or if you choose to, you know, weigh four hundred pounds, that's your business. But there are health risks associated with that.
Yeah, but there's also people who are chronic warriors and, you know, they put stress on themselves in other ways. So really, you get into stick territory when you start saying, this is bad, this is bad, and that's okay.
Well, I'm comfortable with the lifestyle issues. I'm charging premium on those. But it, you know, it's a good point, it's a valid one. I'm comfortable with those. Nobody needs tobacco. If you choose to do it, that's your business. I'm, I'm a grandson of two tobacco farmers. I pulled a lot of tobacco, I spent some time in the barn, cured it and stuff. But... Now, we know your problem. Yeah. Yeah, the air was bad up there when they bought the barn. Uh, but we have the thirty-two point eight billion. Interesting thing about that, when we were, we were, after we were sworn in, about the second or the third day, we had a report from the Department of Revenue and, and the treasurer's office. And their presentation went through how the revenue was coming in and everything. And this year, we're about a hundred and forty million dollars ahead of what they projected. And so our, our revenue is up a little bit. Corporate tax is up about seven percent. Personal income tax is up about five percent. Uh, and sales tax revenue was up about one percent when you adjust for the reduction from seven three-quarters to six and three-quarters. So we're doing better, but we have, we're behind about a hundred and thirty-nine million dollars with Medicaid. So we're not out of the wood yet, we have a lot of work to do. But I, I was talking about the presentation that we had, and they went through all this stuff and how things were kinda rosy. And then I raised my hand, and I said, could you talk a little bit about the unfunded liability for retiree healthcare? And all the people up there just sort of gasped. I just, well, I'd done some homework before I went up there, and that was a question that I wanted to know. What it was, what was the number? And as of, as of December thirty-one last year, it's thirty-two point eight billion. Remember, we have a state budget of nineteen point seven billion. So that's two years, and we did nothing to take care of that. But, they said, they looked at one another, and finally, somebody came up on the mic and answered that question. And a lot of my, my fellow legislators kinda came up to me and said, how do you know to ask that one? And I said, well, I've been doing some homework, and that one bothered me. Uh, but they said, but it's over thirty years. But that's still over a billion dollars a year. And that's, you know, we were fighting for thousands of dollars when we were doing this. So that's the big one that we have to wrestle with. You know, we have some other issues that, that the legislature's gonna have to tackle. Like I said, if this was easy, it would've been done already. It's not easy to tell people retirees that you're gonna have to pay something for your healthcare, or some sort of, when you've made the promises otherwise. But folks, we were broke. And our federal government is broke. And some tough decisions are gonna have to be made. Or else, we're already leaving the people behind, this legacy of debt, and we just can't do that. I don't want my granddaughters to have to do all that, or their granddaughters. And we are not secure, we're not safe, we can't educate, we can't protect our borders, we can't do anything if we're broke. And sooner or later, people are gonna quit blowing this money. And we just have to do something about it. No, let's just cap it off the wall. Are we gonna drill the oil off the coast? Well, we have a bill that the governor vetoed, we're gonna try to resurrect it, and I'm in favor of it, but only if it's done, you know, as, as safe as possible. Technology exists to do it. And it will help, it'll be thousands of jobs in North Carolina. But that's no good if we can't do it safely, in my opinion. And so I would have the certainty that it would, can be done relatively safely. And the technology exists, as I understand it.
Yes, what about the hydrofracturing in the oil shale area of the eastern parts?
Well, they're doing that in Pennsylvania, they seem to be doing it...
Pennsylvania, Oklahoma, there's six states, I believe, that have legalized. You want to make the decision now?
Yeah, there's a, there's a talk about that, that was part of the bill that was vetoed by the governor. And I'm, I'm in favor of it, so long as it can be done safely, as safe as possible.
Can I only say one thing?
Certainly.
Just be careful.
Well, like I said, take your time.
And in my opinion, watch with these other states what happens over the next ten years. What kind of problems have they had with the water that they're using, the chemicals that they're using? What grade of oil are they getting? What kind of jobs are they actually producing? Are they permanent jobs, temporary, in-state, out-state, or first? Just examine all the facts before you make a decision in North Carolina.
Point will take.
Because in ten years, it's only gonna be more valuable than it is right now.
In the meantime, we're paying a lot of money to people who don't like us.
No, not really. Most of our oil comes from Mexi, from Florida seas, Canada, and Central America.
And Mexico.
Not much of it comes from South America or anywhere.
Yeah, we're still paying a lot of money to people who don't like us.
Well, I do not think the oil price will go down. It apparently has to be at a hundred dollars per barrel in order to make it profitable to even attempt these methods. And if they do get the money, they do get the oil, I see no reason why an oil company would sell it to us and reduce the rate and not just process it, refine it into diesel, and send it to Central America where they are now, because that's for profit.
Well, that's all part of the legislation, because that's where the legislators have to come in and regulate what happens to that. So to keep those abuses from happening as best we can.
You have a question?
Yes.
Well, I have a question of the gentleman, because is, is the shelf on the eastern part of North Carolina? Or the western? Is the shelf on the eastern, in the eastern part of our state, or in the western part?
Eastern.
Is it natural gas, or is it oil?
It's oil shale.
Thank you.
Bob, do you have a question?
Yeah. To go back to photo ID. But it was true to Medicaid that anybody can get a photo ID. Or kind of illegal to get a photo ID.
I'm sure they did. You know, they're gonna, everything is gonna be, counterfeits are everything. But that's, and that's true, but that's no excuse for not trying.
I don't want to be a part of it.
But you're going to, yeah?
The idea of this photo ID, whoever mentioned it, about, there's so few people voting. Uh, if that's the case, think about this a minute. If you had a hundred people vote legally, and the score is fifty-one, forty-nine, it'd only take three illegals to make it the other way. To make the one, it doesn't matter whether it's a governor or Democrat, I don't care about that. I, I think, I think it should be photo ID without any question.
Well, my race was decided, sixty-two thousand votes cast, and my race was decided by a hundred and sixty-one.
Right, that's right. See, so see how few votes it would take to change that the other way? Everybody's gotta think about that.
Yeah, about two hundred times you get to.
I still, I still have faith in that. Ben?
You know, keep on this.
You look great, by the way. You know about Ben?
He's American?
Yeah, he is American.
Walker, Walker.
Applause mainly needs to go to his wife, right? But a great donor, did you know that when you met her?
I, I drive a license, I have a photo ID, she was a good donor.
Oh, yeah?
She didn't think it would happen so soon.
Oh, good.
Or, or you don't know that.
Anyway, your question, thanks for being here.
Thank you. You know, on this voter turnout, I've had somewhat mixed emotions. If we get twenty percent turnout, sometimes it's sixteen percent, forty percent, if you're an adult, and you're so apathetic, and couldn't care less about your country, and you choose not to vote early, vote absentee, or show up, I'm not so sure that, if you're that apathetic, and probably ill-informed or misinformed, or not informed, I'm not so sure I would encourage you to vote. I'm here because I'm trying to be an informed electorate, to understand the issues so that I can properly pass a vote. But when forty percent of the electorate in America can't identify the free-range of government, it, it scares me if, if they're really in a position to evaluate some of the more complex issues we face. I know, I spend a lot of time on the phone, we call thousands of people who are ready to vote. But I, I somewhat have mixed emotions, I'm wondering, why not? If, if they care so little, are they informed enough? I mean, to, to cast a vote, perhaps not what I would be, but as long as you make informed decisions, I'm fine with that, and can justify it.
What was the elec, the first election in Iraq? You could turn out like seventy percent.
Yes, yeah.
Maybe we should go with the eight home address.
Oh, I do.
None.
I haven't read a word about it, but I've got some first-hand reports that people from the mission hospital organization came to the towns fairly well. We cleared out the nursing staff of Angel. Has anybody written anything about that?
I don't know, I don't, I don't know about that.
Well, I have.
Really?
Yeah, the question is, weren't you trying to prevent something like that from happening?
Well, that gets to the COPA, which is a agreement that was made between Mission Hospital, Mission Health Systems now, and the state of North Carolina. COPA stands for certificate, thanks, good to see you, Tina.
Thank you.
Uh, COPA stands for Certificate of Public Advantage. In order for Mission and St. Joseph's to merge, they had to have immunity from antitrust regulation. They have a monopoly. And in exchange for getting, getting immunity from a monopoly, they signed up for some certain oversight by the state. And that oversight, it was brought to my attention that that oversight was lacking. And so that's why I introduced the bill in, in the early days of legislature, just to study the COPA, that's all it was. Well, that unleashed the PR campaign from Mission Hospital, a torrent of, and, and I got a phone call from Tim Huggs, our local CEO, who had been in talks to develop an association with Mission Hospital. And Tim Huggs is a friend of mine, he gave me some money from the campaign. He's a man of integrity, I respect him greatly. And I should have called Tim before I had given him a heads up. I was gonna file that, I did not. Things were busy, but I still, that's, that's an excuse, it's not a reason. And so I met with Tim, and also with Gus Wildy, the chief of staff, and who else, the head of the board there, and later, about a week later, told him. But my goal in introducing that bill was to make sure that Mission knew we were watching. I didn't want one Angel Community Hospital, or any other hospital in western North Carolina, to be an emergency, to turn out to be an emergency care clinic for Mission Hospital. I am, Mission is an incredible facility, full of incredible people. And I want Mission to thrive. But I don't want them to be predators for other hospitals in western North Carolina, or, or other healthcare providers. You know, I have evidence that Mission has told some people some practices that you either come with us, or we'll bury you. You know, that's not right, you know? And that's why I, I sort of sat in the background, and my, my concern about this COPA has been vindicated by the special committee of the House looking at the COPA and the certificate of due process in North Carolina. And they're uncovering a lot of abuses. And I'm comfortable with how that's going. That's all I wanted, I wanted them to look at. When I, if I ever have to go to Mission, I wanna know that they're gonna take care of me and do the best that they're willing, or else I might go with you down there.
Go over to the same name.
Yeah, I'll just change my name. But that's what that, that's what that was all about. And I don't know anything about the staff changes. Listen, little community hospitals are not gonna be able to survive in this environment. They have the HIPAA regulations, OSHA, OSHA regulation, Medicaid, Medicare, all this federal regulation. They need experts on staff, or else access to those experts in order to survive. They need buying power that a large system will give them. And so it, it is, it's imperative for these little hospitals, unless they are funded unbelievably like Hospital Island is, they're, they're gonna have to have some sort of association with a larger health system. But I want that to be a willing arrangement between Mission and Carolina Health, or whomever, and Angel, or Haywood, or Harris, or Swain, or any of them. And so I just thought it was important that we reinvigorates oversight on, on Mission, and what they're doing, because they were, well, you've read the paper, you know, read, there've been big articles in the actual citizens, I mean, actual paper, paper, and the TV station, and everybody blasted me at the beginning, even our local paper had some real questions about that. But my position has been vindicated. So, yes.
I just wanna say that I really did think it was a great job, and a lot of what you talked to us about at these other meetings, and I felt very comfortable with, like, my vote counted, and you're up there doing what we'd like you to do. Um, could you share with us those votes that you had to make, that you had to hold your nose? That you were, you know, it, it, it's politics, and you have to compromise, and you have to... I, I hear that, but yet, I wanna know how that works out.
Should I get the cross and the nails now, or?
Well, you know what, I'm, I represent you, and I'll tell you one, and I know the press is here, and the people that are here, I know, report, they're journalists, they're not reporters, they're not reflecting on that. So I'm gonna tell you, I hope I don't get in trouble with this. One that I had a real problem with is the marriage amendment, and I'll tell you why. I believe firmly, passionately, that marriage should be between, defined as between one man and one woman at one time. I also believe with all my heart that in a free America, that people that choose to have their lifestyle the way they want to should have the legal right to do so. Just don't call it marriage. And this marriage, I'm struggling with how I'm gonna vote on this marriage amendment in May. So I'm being perfectly air bones honest with you, because I think that it restricts the freedom of those people to, they can still have a legal contract, but it restricts their freedom a little more beyond my comfort zone. Now, a lot of people don't have a problem with that, but I do. To me, the marriage amendment is so important because these gay and lesbian and transgender people, they, they want moral equivalence to heterosexual marriage, and it never can be, in my opinion. You know, never can be. I mean, they can't reproduce. The heterosexual marriage, a loving marriage, is the bedrock of our society. And it always has been, and it always will. Uh, and so I feel passionately about that. But I don't think that we need to restrict the rights of people who don't choose our lifestyle. But I don't think they have moral equivalence either. So that's where I am on this issue, and that's one that I struggle with. I voted for it, I voted for the people to vote on. And I'm very comfortable in more than seventy percent of the North Carolinians, the most folks that I see. So that's one. There have been other ones, but they're minor ones, but that was the one that I struggled with the most personally. Listen, I am physically conservative, people that know me know that. And I am morally conservative as a person. But I'm a lot of libertarian in me, that, you know, if you choose to live that way, that's your business, just don't make me pay for it. Because I know the end of that story. If you choose to abuse your body, or if you choose to, you know, live a lifestyle that's not healthy, then that's your right as an American, but don't make me pay for it. And don't make the citizen pay for it. So that's probably the biggest one, can you think of another one that I really... That's, that's the one that...
That's, yeah, I don't wanna hear it. That's the last one you want to hear.
Yeah.
No, I appreciate it.
That's the one. Some of my other fellow legislators, Republicans, had a problem with that too. But I did not have a problem at all on restricting abortion. And I'll tell you why. First of all, my older son's adopted, and he was, his birth mother was 17 years old when I went, and I, I should never, and I don't think we should judge that girl or what happened. That's, that was the way it was. But if she had chosen abortion, Judy and I wouldn't have our older son, Jeff, who has two beautiful daughters. And to ask people to wait 24 hours before making that decision is a small price to pay. Incredibly small price to pay. We're not going to overturn abortion. That's a federal law, and we're not going to overturn it, overturn it. But I think we should make people think about what they're doing. And so the restrictions that we put in there, one of the things that you see is who's going to pay for the ultrasound? Is it the ultrasound?
It's already required.
Yeah, it's already required. If you go, they've got, the doctor that's performing the abortion has to perform an ultrasound in order to see what kind of procedure he's going to have to do, he or she. They want to know what, you know, how far along this baby is. That's, that's a bogus argument too. You know, and so I feel strongly in preserving life and dignity of life to the same degree of life. And so I, I believe, I, I feel passionately, and I had some, a dear friend of mine that I've got to know there who was really struggling, he has a daughter and daughter-in-law, and he was, he was really struggling with forcing her to do that, and I'm, and I'm saying 24 hours, make, think about it, 24 hours, it's a small price, it's a big deal to do that.
And a lot of things that we've got emails and phone calls and letters, people are saying, you have no right to force somebody to look at the ultrasound or hear the heartbeat. That's not what the law, what the bill says. What it says is that the person performing the procedure has to make, has to offer that information to the patient, and she can take, take advantage of it or she can refuse. And then the, the person performing the procedure would document refused. But that is the right of the patient to refuse hearing the heartbeat or looking at the, the live ultrasound or, or still ultrasound. But a lot of the things that we heard, how dare you force them to do that? That's not what the, what the bill, how the bill reads.
And, you know, Kay brings up a good point. If, if you're ever interested in what's going on in Raleigh, go to the General Assembly website. You can look up there for bills and read them for yourself. Do your homework. A lot of people don't, and they, they listen to rumors and all kinds of stuff. Go in there and read the bill. And that's a great time to let your legislator know what you think about it, what bills have been filed. And, and that's, you know, when the bill is filed, it's, it goes to Rules Committee and in, in the Senate, Tom Amadaka decides what committee it goes to or what group, groups of committees. And in these committees, these things get hashed out, and you have people come and testify about it or stuff. And so you can, you know, they get refined, and that's, I think it's a great system. And then you have some debate on the Senate floor. Let me tell you something, if you think that the North Carolina Senate, or House for that matter, you know, closely resembles what you see on the nightly news, that couldn't be further from the truth. It is, it's a very respectful body, people have passionate arguments, debates, and it's, it's, it's incredible. The Lieutenant Governor presides over the Senate and does an incredibly fair job, in my opinion. I have a great admiration and respect for him. But I have some dear friends that I respect greatly in, in the Senate from both parties. And I have never heard anyone disrespectful on the Senate chamber floor.
If you're not familiar with navigating the General Assembly website, email us and give us your phone number and I will call you and I will bring it up on my computer, you can bring it up on yours, and we'll talk through all the different things that you can access on there. I do that a lot with people and, you know, teach them how to use the site. It's, it's really neat.
Yes? You've mentioned polls a couple of times.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm curious with you and as I am with all politicians.
I'm a public servant, I don't care what else I say.
But I just want to, if the polls show a certain feeling of your constituents that does not, and you do not agree with that on the vote, which way do you vote?
I, I promise the people when I, when I run that I'm going to vote my conscience. I have done that as a county commissioner, and I will continue to do that. And if people don't approve of that, then they can throw me out. Every two years they have a chance to do that, and I'm okay with that. Worst thing that can happen to me is I go home and my wife's quote, and that's a good place to be.
You, you.
He had a question first, I'm sorry.
Back to Medicaid.
Yes.
Medical devices, they use a price guideline that comes out of the [inaudible].
And, you know, you're, you're getting down into the weeds about stuff that I don't know, but I'm learning.
Well, I, I did tell you what I'm doing.
I'm on the Health and, I'm on the Health and Human Services Committee, the interim committee, I'm one of the members there, and I'm very proud to be the, the Senate Chair for the local government, which I have an opportunity, Harold, to interface with county governments very well, and they need some help, and I can do that. So I'm a pro Tim of the Senate because of my experience as a county commissioner, appointed me the Senate Chair.
I found this, talking with the lady in the health [inaudible] owns a device company.
Yes.
You see a lot advertised about COPD, which is a breathing problem. Medicare pays, she's claiming, that's what she told me, Medicare pays $189 for that machine when you're [inaudible]. And if you're talking with her a little bit, if I wanted to buy that outright with her without going through Medicare, it was about $60.
Yeah.
All this fuss of abortion, you got the same thing here, about cost a minute, my daughter's probably on someplace. If you got rid of some of this bloated bureaucracy and whoever's making the excess profit, maybe some of these health plans would be acceptable.
You know, and, you know, that happens in a representative government. I'm telling you, you get to some committees and you get a bill out of the committee and then it gets changed, and sometimes nobody owns up to who changes it. And that kind of stuff happens. And that's what happens when, like I was talking to you about the breast cancer drug, two drugs, $43 million or more for the name brand and the generic, the generic is just as effective, and somebody is getting paid off. And that's not an isolated case, so we need to cut that out. Medicaid in North Carolina has been growing far faster than we can support it. And if the Affordable, so-called Affordable Care Act goes into play, it will increase the Medicaid rolls in North Carolina to where one in four North Carolinians is on Medicaid. It will increase our rolls between 500,000 and 700,000 people. I'm telling you, folks, we can't afford that. We can't afford what we're doing now. And there are a lot of good things about the Affordable Care Act, but I have a serious problem with the mandate. I think it's unconstitutional, but the Supreme Court's going to take that out. But anyway, yes, sir?
You talked about the state's budget and prior conversations in there, but my concern is what is the chances of North Carolina being solvent if the federal government goes belly up, which is a bad chance as well?
Well, that's, and, and one of the reasons why we think, why I think it's important to get our physical house in order is because of that, you know? We have to take care of our unfunded liabilities, we're not going to be able to fix those all at once, but we've got to start. And listen, you can't fix a $2.5 billion hole by cutting just fraud and waste and abuse. You're going to have to cut out good programs, just like you do in your home. You know, sometimes when your, your salary goes down or you go on retirement or whatever, you have to make some lifestyle changes, and some good things, some fun things could come. And we had to cut some good programs.
That does not get covered though, or taken care of. I'm talking with them the next year, year and a half. What is the chances of North Carolina remaining solvent?
North Carolina has a triple A bond rating. And I think, again, the Treasurer's Office does an excellent job of keeping control of things. Their problem is probably legislators that have made promises that they can't keep. We have an excellent Treasurer's Office. I'm just, I'm astounded at what they can do, but, you know, you have a legislature that they want to do this, and they have a constituent and an interest group, and, you know, maybe a drug company they want to pay off or whatever, we just, we can't afford to do that anymore.
There's a list of states that are on the books for needing a bailout from the government. Well, when the government's not there, the federal government, are we going to be okay?
Well, if, if, like I, the federal government has its hands on a lot, you know, 7% of our education budget is from the federal government, you know, in every state, 100% of the rules, 7% of the money. And we have, you know, the feds spend a lot of money in North Carolina, and so if we lose federal money, you know, like the stimulus money, if the education system is screaming now, wait till next year. Because a lot of far look, you know, people, superintendents that were looking on the horizon held back some of that stimulus money, that $1.3 billion a year that they were getting, held some of it back to tie them over this year. Next year's going to be really tough, because all that money is going to be gone. So it's going to be tough, but I will tell you that I'm in North Carolina, I'm determined that we're going to be as strong as we can make it, and have enough time. And I'm serving with a lot of people that feel the same way.
I don't have to move.
Well, if you move, then our, our problem's going to get worse, because we won't have your revenue.
[inaudible].
Yes?
When various state departments create their annual budget, do they use zero-based budgeting?
Uh, no, not yet. They, what, the governors told them this year was to prepare a budget based on 5%, 10% and 15%. And I was on appropriations.
Cuts.
Correct, cuts. And I was on appropriations for general government, which has 18 departments in, in the state. And I, I have, I had part responsibility, I was a co-chair of that committee, I had part responsibility for departments in the state I didn't know existed, and I learned. But they were all given 5%, 10% and 15% cuts by the governor. And very few of them had to cut that much yet. A lot of, you hear a lot about jobs, you know, that were gone away, a lot of these positions, they weren't jobs, they weren't people, they were positions, that they'd been carried on their books for a long time, and we finally said, no, we're not going to do that, we're going to get rid of those positions. Because if you have a position, next year you can fill it. We're going to, we're doing fine without right now, or we're cutting them. We got rid of a lot of positions like that. So we're not to zero-based budgeting, and it's going to take a while to get there.
But that's a goal.
Uh, that's certainly a goal of mine. I think you ought to justify all your money that you're going to spend. So that's the way I hope. And I, you know, I would be remiss if I didn't tell you that I've had a lot of dedicated public servants in Raleigh. And, and people that are working in a screwed up system. And we're doing our best to try to fix the system. And I think we made a lot of [inaudible]. We also found a lot of, can you put this in the aircraft? That we need, you know, that needs to be dealt with. And people willing to call a spade a spade and get rid of it. It's just a waste. We're doing stuff that will. Thanks, I appreciate it, I'll be in here for the, you have a question?
Just that to you.
Yes.
Some states I know print ballots, voter ballots and other big languages, do we do that in North Carolina?
We do. We, actually, we were attempting to make English the official language in North Carolina.
Oh, right.
The Cherokee might take a 70,000. Oh, Castle Doctrine, nobody asked me about the Castle Doctrine until now. We passed the Castle Doctrine in North Carolina, it is a law. You have the, the right in your own home or your own property, your own car, your own business to defend yourself and use deadly force if necessary. You can assume that somebody that's coming into your house uninvited is there to do you harm, and you are also immune from civil liability. You asked that this year. I wanted to go further, that you protect yourself with deadly force, any place you have, you can, you're in lawfully entitled to be, but that doesn't make it. But we have a lot of Democrats support.
You have to say if they come to get you, if you thought your life was in danger.
Well, if somebody breaks into my house, when they're not invited.
You have to prove then that you felt that your life was in danger.
No, it's assumed that now.
Oh, it is.
It's assumed.
It's what they [inaudible].
It's assumed, you don't have to prove anything. All you got to prove is prove that they were in there, because they're dead now. Do you have any idea what somebody did this weekend? This weekend?
Yeah.
Oh, we have to meet Sunday?
Yeah.
Uh, I don't know, we heard rumors, we have caucus meeting on Monday. Uh, we mainly kind of came back to deal with redistricting issues and some other, anything that's a governor vetoed, we have the option of bringing that up. Uh, just trying to tie it up, you know, our legislative session started January 26th, ended June 17th, and 83 days, the shortest legislative session since 73. But we have redistricting, we had governor vetoes that we had to deal with, what else? That's all pretty much.
Every day we're thinking of governor vetoes or [inaudible].
Yeah. So Monday and Tuesday we'll be there, I have to go to Raleigh after this legislative session, I have to be there two days a month, Monday and Tuesday the second, Monday and Tuesday of the month, to, for Health and Human Services and for the Joint Legislative Committee on Local Government, those committee meetings. And so fortunately, I have to be there two days a month, unless something happens, the governor can always call us in for emergency or something like that. Also, one of the things that we're dealing with is the storm from East Coast, doing tornadoes and emergency care or something like that, that's almost all.
Can we give Judy a hand too?
Thank you.
I would say some of these, and I, I never say anything at these, but I just appreciate Justin and this other young man and one back here being here, because if you all don't think of [inaudible], you know, who's going to do it? I mean, look at, we're all [inaudible]. But really, if you all don't think of.
I have a promise, I'm [inaudible]. And so I just have to look at the details about that, but you need to know that I'm, I'm, I'm passionate about keeping taxes as low as possible. So if that answers your question, did I answer your question of the Castle Doctrine?
It is, it's a user's tax, that way everything, you would not worry about gas.
Yeah, I'm a fan of user fees. Listen, I, everybody's time to go home, and I want to thank you, and I'm honored and privileged to serve you. [inaudible].